For the record. We call this meeting of the planning board to order. Um, I think today will be a fast meeting. Do we have Jonathan on?
I saw him there before.
He is definitely here. Okay, what happened to him?
He was there.
Yeah.
He's there or he's not there?
That's me. He was.
He was there.
Um.
Well, maybe he will, he will call back in. I don't have any remarks. Does anyone have any additional uh? Then items they'd like to add or modify?
No.
Okay. Um. I don't think we, we don't have minutes yet for, from the fourteenth.
Right. Correct me if I apologize.
No worries. That was the uh. My, I am also was unable to do my onboarding doc. For today. So our only, our only bit of business is um. This response to the zoning board. It is important that we try to get through it today because it's on the ninth and we won't actually meet again. Uh. Yeah, we won't actually meet again. So yeah, yeah.
Should we attend?
Um.
Maybe for the practice?
I think if you would like to watch.
Yeah, that's.
That it'll be broadcast. If you'd like to attend it as a, as certainly as a um member of the Cold Spring public, you have a right to attend.
Okay.
And so it's, it's a public meeting.
Better to zoom.
It might be better to zoom. Um, the only I would encourage everyone, there, there are situations where because you are on the planning board or any board, there may be instances where you have to clarify whether you are speaking as a, as a planning board member or as a private citizen. Um, public hearings are often one of those scenarios where you need to clarify uh the whether you're speaking on, on behalf of yourself or behalf of the board. Um, generally, we should try to limit our, our remarks as a board to things like this that we kind of agree on. Um, there may be scenarios where um, like I would attend or one of, one of us would attend like a village board meeting and speak on behalf of the board to the, to like the village board. Um, but just so you are all aware of that, that kind of dynamic is there. Um.
Yeah, I'd only be observing.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and you should feel comfortable, like the, I believe that the protocol in the zoning board hearings is that uh. Karen, can we, like, can, I know that, I know that interested parties are allowed to speak. Are there, there's also, is there general public allowed as well?
There's for hearing, there's public comment.
And it can be any, but it doesn't have to be an interested party, right?
No.
Okay, yeah.
You know, if there's anybody here, there's anybody that zoomed in and raised their hand. Let me get Jonathan in here. Um. But they, their their comments are made to the board, not the applicants.
Yeah.
And then once that's done, then the board can have their discussion.
Um, hey, Jonathan. Jonathan?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yes, to unmute. But he's connecting to audio, so.
He's sharing of a of an editing. All right, this is my computer. Yeah.
I do, but I can get them after. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I can second let you. Who's this now? Or maybe that's Jonathan by phone.
That's probably his phone because he can't get the other audio.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's going on with my computer, but I couldn't connect the audio for some reason.
Um, is there any chance you could make it possible for me to share? And if you, if you yeah, very great. That's fine. Uh. I'm just, uh, just for ease of, of our collective editing to get to an agreed upon draft. I'm just sharing this while, so we do a live edit. To get to a good spot. Um. Okay, before we get to that, uh, any report from members on anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, no, well, well, we have all business, but nothing to address here. Uh, no new business. Uh, any members of the public? Nope. Um, all right, so we can get on to the board business, which is the um comment on the um zoning board public hearing on April ninth.
Okay, we, we don't have any correspondences either.
Okay, great. Sorry. I missed that. Um, okay, so Jonathan, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, perfect.
Okay, so I sent the draft uh before this, this afternoon and Ben shared a draft of an additional comment. Um, a couple of things I want to point out before we dive into the substance of, of what's here. So um first, I want everyone to feel really comfortable. Uh. There's, there's so many versions of the boards like issuing comments in terms of we could could agree upon a single set of comments that we all sign to and we send on to the zoning board or the um or uh the uh village board. Um, it's also entirely fine and does not hurt my feelings whatsoever if folks have differing comments that they would like to add, or they can agree to some sort of other comments that sign their name and then have additional ones that they, that they would like to add. So I want everyone to feel really, really comfortable in uh being able to, to express themselves in, in this kind of forum to the other boards because I think everybody's opinion matters here. And um, so you know, insofar as there's you know, there's, there's some value of coming to coherent, single statement. It's not required and I doesn't, it doesn't really bother me if we need to make additional um comments. Um, so with that in mind, um, I put together this uh um memo to the um, to the zoning board um about the items that are uh being addressed at the April ninth zoning board public hearing. Um, we mentioned last time that we had no comment on Five Furnace Street. If that is still true, then I think this item is fine. We can move on to the main, the main event, which is one thirty-three, one thirty-five main. Um. The structure that I put here is just that, that we have um one or more comments from the board, members of the board that can, that are authored and then joined by um any additional members who would like to sign their name to that comment. Um, my uh, my initial comment. Um, if you have a chance to read it, but um, I don't think there's anything that should be surprising to folks here. It's, it's, there's two things that I, I try to point out. One is just um reiterating that we would like the zoning board in their determination to uh make sure that what if they decide to issue a judgment on a variance uh in one way or another, that it is scoped to a particular use, because that is the granularity of um, the, the actual code. So if, as an example, if they just generically reduced uh the parking requirement to two, we would not, we wouldn't have enough clarity on knowing which use it was, it was an application. This is the more, I'm sure they would probably figure that out on their own, but it's just a, a bit of reminder from, from us in order to do so. Um. And, and then I tried to um reference the, some of the language of the code to provide um in the, in that section. The beginning of every section um in the code, you'll find a statement of um kind of like what's the point of the section and what's the intent of, of the authors. So I try to cite some of those as, as a kind of a, a guidepost for how to think about um, the, the zoning regulation that's there and how we might want to uh address it. Um, and then go on to call out the specifically, the residential use uh uh that we, uh, that this in particular statement strongly discourages the reduction in parking requirements for the residential use in particular because it would put an unnecessary burden on residents of Cold Spring and specifically the eventual residence of the residential unit there um by depriving them of, of, of parking. Um. With respect to the retail use, I um was decided that um I would basically err on the side of just kind of uh not necessarily making a judgment about what the right thing to do was, but to outline uh some interpretations of the code that could be, that could be made and point out that uh that the, that the relief with respect to the retail use uh has often in the past been achieved by requesting parking waivers from the village board via the planning board. So basically off of like pointing out to them that they're just reminding them that there are other avenues to be, for the relief to be pursued besides just the variant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, before we move on, anything in here that folks would like to change, address, feel good about, don't like? Um, we, we talk and, and maybe come to some broader agreement. I would love to have other folks sign on to that statement. Uh, but I won't, my feelings won't be hurt if, if folks don't want to, so uh.
I, I personally think it's concise. I think that it, that it addresses the topic. And I also like that it gives an option where we are not promoting, you know, we, we are, we are trying to keep, you know, the, the parking down, but understanding that there have to be variances and certifications, you know? So it's making it clear that that is an option, but it's not the only option that we'd like to see, you know, the, the, the parking actually, you know, um be provided. So I, I, for me, I think it's great without having to, to, to put our, our thumb on the scalp at all. I think we're just, we're we're not the zoning board, right? So we're the planning board. I think that we're just giving them, you know, our view of, of the options, but kind of, so, so for me, I, I, I would be willing to sign on to this, but I know that Ben had talked about maybe it was an issue with the the last, the last sentence that he was a little.
Yeah, so um, Kelly, do you want to, do you have comments or?
No, please go ahead. Please go ahead.
Um, so my, my, um, so my, can you see this? All right. My, my brother thought I'd, and I'm just gonna wind back a few minutes and say, um. Um, I, I totally, you know, uh, agree and accept and so forth that, that there can be multiple versions of us writing memos to other boards and so forth. It could be, and it can even be like as a board member or as a private citizen, et cetera, et cetera. There's, there are all kinds of um you know, versions of this. I, I think it's, um, I personally feel that it it's more sort of, you know, powerful if we can, you know, act as, as one voice and buy into even if we're not agreeing with every, every, you know, vowel and syllable that we basically can agree on, on, on a, on a letter and this is a position of the board. Because then it just, it, it's, it's um, it doesn't feel fractured.
Sure.
And um, it's not so splintering off like one individual feels this, one individual feels that, doesn't feel like a board at that point in some way. So
Sure.
So and I, I do think it'd be awesome. We, we may not have time to, to do another iteration of this where we're sort of melding.
Yeah.
Which that, I think that'd be ideal.
Yeah.
Um. The, where, you know, where we could just send a, a letter or memo
Yeah.
to the zoning board, which is what they asked for and say, okay, this is our position.
Yeah.
This is like, this is basically what, what we would vote for.
Yeah.
We get a majority, we get a majority on this.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's a thought on that.
Yeah, yeah. So if I could just kind of piggyback off that, um, the code does call for an advisory recommendation from the planning board to the zoning board. So I think it's, it's fine for everyone to kind of author their own comments and note, you know, who authored what, but I think um overall, the, the whole board should adopt the comments i- if each member uh is in agreement and wants to vote to adopt them.
So can you, can you clarify the distinction you just made, Jonathan? I'm, I'm not sure I'm following.
Sure. So right now I've seen the letter, like it says, um, comment authored by Jesse St. Charles Chair and joined by members blank. Um. So I think, you know, unless uh, you know, majority of the members uh essentially joins uh and adopts this recommendation, um, I don't think you can really have um separate and distinct recommendations from individual board members. I think it kind of has to be something that the entire board adopts.
So I did the only, the, this came up last time while, while you were gone and John said uh, the, the opposite, unfortunately.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
I'll, I'll defer to him then if he's, if he thinks um
Am I correctly did?
I think that he said, well, I remember that he.
I don't remember, but that's, I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I thought that he did say that we could just work on it internally during, during the meeting and then come up with one statement, even though multiple authors, if we all agree upon it.
Yeah.
I, 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 but again.
Yeah.
You might be right that, that you have to put whoever actually wrote it down.
Yep. Yep, um. Okay, I mean, the, the, the contrast to throw in there is that when we do have a hearing, planning board hearing, and we make judges, Jonathan, my understanding is that we all will, I mean, basically all we all have a yes, no, everyone has their own yes, no vote along with commentary, so it wouldn't be entirely inconsistent with what John was, assuming I'm remembering correctly, what John might have been saying last time.
That, that, yeah. A hypothetical example where, where two planning board members are writing zoning board and they have opposite positions, like I'm just gonna use this.
Yeah.
I'm gonna ham it up.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, the, the one, like one board, one board member is like, you should give full parking waivers. The other ones.
Yeah. Right, right, right.
And they, and we send that, then what's the zoning board gonna make of that?
I, I, I agree with the, 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 the idea that a unified message is a stronger one, but I'm mostly just trying to make sure I understand what the requirement is before, before we navigate between multiple statements and, and a single statement. I, I'm, I'm open to definitely to trying to get to a single statement. I'm just trying to understand whether or not it's required or not. So Jonathan, do you, do you feel like it's, it's required to have a single statement that is signed on by some majority?
That's how I read the code. Um, but certainly if John, um, you know, feels otherwise, then I'll defer to him. I don't want to contradict what he told you at the last meeting. Um, but I read the code as one statement, which may be authored by multiple different members, um, but one statement adopted by a majority.
Okay. Um, Karen, do you have any thoughts or comment about this?
Well, it, it's Jonathan or John that would make those decisions, but I know that um in the past, the, the board would discuss and maybe not everybody agreed on every single point.
Yeah.
But they had to vote to approve it as in shape to send it to the other board or to the board of trustees, whatever it is.
I see.
And as an expression of.
So there was, so there was not really a delineation of, of authorship. Okay.
I, I haven't seen that, but.
I think, I think given Jonathan, given Jonathan's statement, and if that hasn't been done and if, if we've not delineated authorship in the past, I don't think there's any, I mean, I'd be happy to have that option in the future, but you know, erring on the side of being conservative, I think we should, we should try to work towards something that we feel like we can collectively approve.
And I don't think that a board, you know, that that's what the meetings are about, you know?
Yeah.
People want to see what, if there was anybody that, you know, disagreed, they could
Yeah.
They could watch, they could participate.
Yeah.
But I think if there's something being sent from the board, it should be approved, like if one person dissents.
Yeah.
It's their right to dissent here, but I don't think that that should be sent as a planning board over to, to, you know, to them.
Yeah.
They have a right to go to the meeting as a private citizen and voice their concerns. That's my thought.
Okay.
I agree with that 100%.
All right, um, okay, so then we, then our, then our activity tonight is to, is to try to get uh some um, single statement that we can, that we, that we feel like we can get at least three folks to approve. Um, before we move on to the substance of yours.
Right, but I'm gonna talk about yours.
Oh, great, okay, yeah.
Cool. Um, so again, like excellent, excellent letter. Um, the, the only thing that I get confused with is in the second paragraph.
Yep.
Where the first sentence is basically saying uh, we feel very strongly that, that uh the parking requirements residential use be enforced.
Yep.
Um, and then it, it's, it feels to me like we're saying, well, but you know, we kind of directionally, you can, you can, what, you can, um, you can give away before uh, the retail use. That's the way I read it. And um, yeah, whereas I, I think technically the um the, so I see, and I see what the, what the overall goal is. It's like if we don't give the resident, if we don't give the the, the, the retail parking spaces, then maybe they won't have cars. And that's just um, and I don't want to, you know, go against the code here or, or, or in the spirit of the code, but that's not, it's not reality. People are gonna come with their cars. And if it's if it's, you know, a store assistant that, that living wherever they're living, but people in, they can, or pages.
Yeah.
But it, often a, a lower cost area to live in and
Yeah.
they're, they're, they're driving it.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna note.
It's almost like if you, if you add it in, you can almost, I, I'm not telling you to add it on, I'd add it, but if we, we had to mention like we're, we're expecting that the retail be mandatory.
Yeah.
Or whatever the, whatever the correct, the virtue that is.
I'm just gonna make notes so that we can.
By the way, this is not the whole, like, I, I think it's an, it's an excellent.
Uh. All right. That, um, before we move on to Ben's, um, Jonathan, uh, is there anything, like, just because we collectively not written, written any of these comments before, is there anything that concerns you in the language here that, that uh we need to address more directly?
No, nothing that I saw. I thought it looked um pretty well thought out.
Okay. All right, um, all right, let's, let's um move on to Ben. I don't know if folks had a chance to, to read his um Ben, I just want to make a note. I, I made a couple of suggestions here. Um, um, a couple of places you mentioned of waiver.
Uh, yes.
I, I changed it to variance.
About, about like mail, um, Apple Mail does uh some crazy, crazy um spell checking and it just, and uh.
So if you feel comfortable with waiver being changed to variance, I'll go ahead and.
No, but variance, bonkers, absolutely. I, I didn't think that would fly. And then, and thank you for correcting trail, my, I mean, yes.
And then this is now no longer a relevant thing since we're trying to get to a single statement. So I'll go ahead and next that. And then this is variance. It's great. Okay. You want to talk us through uh the structure here and, and anything you think is worth calling out?
Um, has, has everyone had a chance to take a look at this or?
No.
No.
Okay, yeah, why don't we, why don't we um?
Read it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay, all right.
So, I mean, can, can I comment um first?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, Ben's looks like an intro, which could even be thrown just in the front of what you have here.
Yeah.
The first paragraph in there.
Yeah.
First two paragraphs just stating our overall concern
Yep.
of what's going on in the, in the, in the village.
Yep.
That to me seems like it, it's a natural segue into then you're more detailed and focused on these specific things, but in general, this is a decent statement for our, that, that's.
Like a intro.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is for the first, for the first paragraph?
That's what I would say, yeah, but I, I, I'm, I'm saying that that first paragraph could just be tacked on here. The rest, you, you're gonna have to meld in with, with what you have in statement here.
Um. I think that's reasonable. Jonathan, how, like, what's the rhetorical flourish limits uh to these kinds of comments? Like in terms of?
No, I, I.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is okay. I think it um just kind of echoes the intent of the code to recognize that there is a, an issue with parking.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. I mean, I think I'm uh, I'm fine with, with uh moving this to a um to up here.
When James was here two weeks ago, and I had, I don't think I made myself clear, but I said, you know, come up with a plan A, a plan B. It wasn't so much the architectural plan, but a variance plan or not any variance, so that if the zoning board, the village board said, this isn't going to fly, you need to come up with maybe something that's a little, a little more uncomfortable, but that you can, you can live with.
Well, this is, uh, this is related to a thing that I, that I um wrote, uh, I think to everyone, um, was it last week? Um, about um specifically like, so Jonathan and I chatted about some of the stuff we talked about. One of the things that I think is really important for the board to recognize that uh it's just worth underlining is that we're not empowered to approve non-conforming site plans. It's just not, not a, not a function of, of us. I mean, it basically would undermine the, the zoning board, uh, if we were able to, yeah, yeah, and the building department. So um, so with that context, like, we do have the, like, we have the luxury of leaning on that hard limitation on our power to, to basically say, well, if, until, until they present to us a site plan that actually meets a code in, in combination with either waivers or variances or just by a change in the site plan in order to meet the code as it's written, we don't actually have to really entertain it uh effectively uh from, from a, from a going to a hearing perspective.
Right.
Um, so uh, you're right, but we also like, it doesn't even have to be a suggestion that we have. It's like literally just like, okay, well this, you didn't get a variance and you didn't get a waiver and the, and the site plan doesn't meet code. So like, there's not really anything to do here.
Okay.
So you can come back to us with something that does, uh, or not. That's up to you. Um, so hopefully that makes, it makes our job a little bit easier. It's
Oh, yeah.
where we don't have to like walk that line. Jonathan, is there anything you gotta add to that based on our conversation last week?
No, I, I, I think um you summed it up well.
Okay.
Uh, you're part of um, part of what uh the applicant has to submit to have their site plan approved is a complete application and the application really can't be complete until it comply, conforms with the code with respect to things like parking and setbacks and all that.
Yep. Great.
The, the, it's a question, but, but has, has this application met that or hasn't?
No, 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 no. We don't have a valid site plan yet.
Can you, can you just slide it over? And I, I just have, sorry. After that, I do have some comments of how to tie the two together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think there's, there needs to be a connection, so I can give a comment.
Yeah, yeah, please.
I would just say, right before your, these comments, I would say in regards. I would just say, right before your these comments, I would say in regards to one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main Street. And then go into the specifics about that, cause the above is more of a general statement.
Yep.
Yeah, and then it will flow right into that we're specifically now talking about one thirty-three, one thirty-five. However, you wanna.
Yeah.
It might have to be, we'll change after that, but I just wanted to get some segue into the you going into more specific about that this function. Right, there you go.
Yeah.
Capital F main street.
Was that right?
In capital I C S.
I'm sorry. Um, all right, so Cold Spring Village is right at an inflection point with regards to parking. Many stakeholders are like.
And is it regard or regards? I'm not sure which is right in that.
Uh.
Regarding.
With regards to parking, I would say.
Okay, yeah, and then in the bottom, I said in regards to, so I don't know if it's in regard or in regards to, I I.
Sorry, in the bottom?
Like, just where we added it, sorry, here.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Again, I said in regard.
With.
With, yeah.
I was.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there you go, okay.
Okay, great. Uh, all right, so Cold Spring Village is uh right at an inflection point with regards to parking. Many stakeholders are experiencing parking crisis and are struggling to find. Right, to regularly find parking. As we know, the village government is creating new standards, tools remedy this as well as. To prepare for imminent externalities, e.g. the Ford Trail. Um, these tools include implementing a parking plan and system of meters and permits to manage this, as well as. Recent changes in zoning code. Uh, careful enforcement, go ahead.
I think you get rid of manage this in systems of meters and permits.
Just because that's part of the parking plan?
Yeah, I think these tools include implementing a parking plan and system of meters and permits, right? I don't know, that's.
Oh, you meant to to manage this.
Yeah, 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 I think. Again, I don't wanna be too technical.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Careful enforcement and management of the zoning code around parking is crucial, especially as we deal with overwhelming. Amounts of tourists now on the weekends, now on weekends, as well as preparing for your demand. Uh. Is this the one, is this is this a fragment with the grammar grammar books uh who are better than me?
Well, that's why I keep asking for you guys, but I do think it is, it is a little, it's a little clunky.
Um.
We could just say it in another way, right? Um.
I think this is a.
I I I don't even, do you really think it needs to be in there? I think we are saying that we wanna cut it down and maybe just to. Um, I mean, that's, that's.
Well, now and in the, uh, what if we just change it to now and in the future?
That's what I'm saying, we already said it, we might just, we might just wanna take the sentence out. I I again, I don't wanna edit your whole thing down, but I think it's, I think it's already, I think it's already stated above that.
On on weekends, full stop.
Yeah.
Delete the rest or or just take the whole thing out, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
What about that?
There you go.
Yes, okay, cool.
Long amount of tourists, right?
Yeah. All right. So we've got uh questions about the strength of this statement, and what I think is a uh. Is a stronger statement uh in uh. Ben Ben's, uh, the rest of Ben's comment in particular. Um. I'm, this last, this last segment about if necessary recommend the village engineer be engaged, I'm curious. Uh. That one, that one. That one feels like something that. Um. I'm not sure, I agree with it as like a as like an action that we can take.
Right.
I'm just not sure it both it is belongs in a recommendation to the zoning board, but I've. Um, Jonathan, do you have a feeling about whether this is?
Can I just make sure? Yeah, go for a second, sorry, I'm not, I'm not, I'm jumping in front of Jonathan, I mean to, but the reason why I I I added it was. Firstly, we've talked about it several times in the meetings here.
Yeah.
And secondly, um, if the applicant in the zoning board meeting is like, well, we're not sure if we can fix, I don't know, I'm not sure turning circle, whatever, whatever they may say. Uh, if um, we're like, we're not experts in this.
Yeah.
None of us have been able to take measure, like, maybe we should. Basically, basically, we're saying, slow down.
Yeah.
Let's let's get this professionally analyzed. You're asking for this. Let's look, let's get an expert to tell us what's possible.
Yeah.
And so it's really, it's more a slowdown than than giving advice.
But but the intent is to remind the zoning board, right, remind the zoning board members that they have a, they have a resource available to them?
That we all do, yeah, correct.
Yeah, okay.
We and them, we share this resource, which is the the village engineer, and and so regard, so on the debate of like. Is it, is it one space, two spaces, four spaces, ten, whatever, that's, that should not be left up to us, I don't believe, it should be left up to. The village engineer, we're we're enforcing code. We may, we may have opinions, I've got my opinions, but.
Yeah.
But it's it's the engineer who could, who tells that.
Jonathan, do you have a thought about about, uh, the my only, my only question is like. I think it's very relevant to us. I'm not sure it's relevant to the to the zoning board. Jonathan, do you have a? A s- a thought about that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say first really even, I I think it's up to the applicant engineer to to look at this and kind of come up. With an alternative and based on what they come up with, you know, then maybe you engage the village engineer to review that and see if. They agree with what the applicant's um engineer has presented, but I I think you you're kind of right that it's not. Uh, so much for the zoning board to to handle. I think really they're just looking at whether or not the variance should be granted.
Okay. All right, so um, you're kind of reiterating the parking requirements specific uh that are generating this. Um.
She went and reread it out, and. It's like this.
Yep, yep.
Now, um. The last line.
Yep.
Uh, I think, I mean, I understand what we're trying to get across, but I don't know if we um. Want to bang the table that we feel it should not be granted. I think that there should be some sort of language that says we wouldn't, you know, strongly encourage that. That that um, there'd be no variances. Possible.
They comply to.
You know, instead of saying, you know, we don't think there should be, I don't know if it's a great, you know, they're gonna be feel like. Aggressive towards them, but I but I think we should be encouraging them not to grant. Variances, but not say that we strongly say that they're that they shouldn't in this case, you know, but I I don't know, but again.
I I I agree with you to be told, no, no, I agree a hundred percent. I I I apologize, I did write this in a bit of hurry. I just like to use, but I was like, ah, and I was I was literally editing as I had to run off and pick up my son this afternoon, I'm trying to try to get things finished, so so um. It's like, it's like the more, the more nuanced, the better, and I just wanted to get something.
Yeah.
In front of people with, you know, a few hours notice, so they can take a look at it, and then we can talk about it tonight, so um, please, please go ahead.
Be strong.
I don't wanna.
Good, Jonathan. I don't wanna put words in anyone's mouth, but maybe a good way to word it would be to say that the the planning board. Um, feels that the applicant should be encouraged to explore alternatives to seeking variances.
And and that that it's our preference that no variance be granted without, you know. Um, every, you know, some sort of way to say.
Every avenue has been.
Yes, to to prove to us that this is the only, that the only way really to do it is to have, is is a, is. Engineerily not possible, or whatever it is, you know, just some way to say that, you know, our preference is to to, you know, if possible, to be able to. Provide all the parking and that it beyond the applicant to, you know, to show that this is not feasible. You know, I I, that's what I'm just saying in general, I don't, that's that's not really for this, but it's just. Uh, how will we convey that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um. No, 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 this is, this is the work, this is the work of the meeting. This this is the work of the meeting, so um.
Apple can comply with the village code.
All right, so I think a way to do this is to soften this part. That that I had before with with respect to retail use, um. Uh, we could say while. Uh, a variance could be directionally supported by the code's intent of discouraging excessive use of vehicles. Uh. The board, um, the board believes that every, that every um. Avenue be sought uh to accommodate the required number of vehicles. Um, but for before a.
A variance.
A variance is granted.
Yeah.
Does that, does that feel, okay, great.
Yeah, and that puts forth that, you know, that's our statement that we're, we we don't wanna give variances, but we don't wanna come down hard just on one thirty-three, one thirty-five. And say, you guys don't get it. We just wanna say, you know, let the zoning board know that we, that's that's in general, no matter what the applicants are. We we want them to go through the process and make sure that they they. They've done, they've done their engineer work and make sure that 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 there has to be a reason for the variance, and not just, we don't wanna. You know, limit them from putting in a nice patio in the back.
But I think, and I think that's, that's part of the point, though, is is that they may wanna put in a nice patio in the back and not parking, and what point? Um, my my position is, I believe the code's position is, no, that you have to maximize the parking, as soon as you've, as soon as you've met the. The minimum parking requirements, this is not the maximum, this is the minimum parking requirement.
Yeah.
Four spots. Once you've met that, then.
Right.
Patio away, like.
Right, but no.
That's exactly right, and and James was saying, well, that disrupts the entire idea of the of the project. He said, because I said, when you, you look at that, the way that they built out that patio. Yeah, that's eating up all of that, that land, all that property.
Hmm hmm.
So if they make, and if they take that away, he's he's saying, well, that defeats the purpose of this. Of this design and what the owner wants. That's what I heard him saying, so.
But also he did bring up a safety issue of the turning and and the way that.
Absolutely, yeah.
We have to make sure that that, you know, our desire to have all of those spaces are within, you know, safety requirements that they think, and the zoning board will probably have to. Could say about that.
Right, right.
Sure.
All right, I think, I think that is, I think that gets it. Uh, Jonathan, do you have any comment about this language? Feel good about it?
Yeah, no, I think it looks good.
All right. Uh.
Can you, yeah, I just wanna read the whole thing in context here.
I don't know if you wanna say with twice.
Uh, where do I?
With the framing and then with respect, just my comment.
And is the last sentence necessary? We know that relief could be achieved. I mean, they they know that relief can be achieved. They they know what their powers are.
Um. They. Well, this is our power. This is not their power.
No, but the the applicant going to the going to the zoning board or the or the village board is.
I I would just put in as a last recourse, you know, just almost like that is, you know, that should be seen.
We will have an opportunity to provide comments to the village board in that, in that, well, I think this is a.
Okay.
Uh, the the advantage of this language is, I think that it. Um, it both states firmly a position and also, but also is like. Trying to be generous and laying out what the, you know, kind of what what are what are the paths here?
Right.
Um, okay, um.
I'll go with this, I think it's great.
Okay. Every everyone feel good? Um.
They do.
Great, shall we vo- vote to adopt?
Need a motion.
Yeah, would anyone like to make a motion? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, then we read it one more time.
Yeah, yeah.
Changes just and then then I'll vote on it.
Yep, okay, um, would you like me to read it out to everyone, or or would you like to spend time with it yourself? We could also print it and and people can and just spend time with it.
Don't print.
Okay.
Don't waste paper.
Okay.
Do you wanna read it?
Yeah, I can read, I.
Yeah.
I like, yeah.
Totally have a good reading voice, so.
And I'm gonna read along, just.
All right, uh, Cold Spring Village is right at an inflection point with regards to parking. Many stakeholders are experienced, are experiencing a parking crisis and are struggling to regularly find parking. As we know, the village government is creating new standards and tools for me to this, as well as uh, preparing.
Or to prepare.
As well as to prepare. As we know, the village government is creating new standards and new tools for me to this, as well as to prepare. For imminent externalities, the Ford Trail. Uh, these tools include.
I I did think maybe it is.
As we know, the village government is creating new standards and tools for me to this, as well as preparing, yeah.
Cause you say creating.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's preparing for imminent externalities, you do the Ford Trail. Uh, these tools include implementing a parking plan and system of meters and permits. As well as recent changes in zoning code. Careful.
The zoning code, no? Recent changes in zoning, okay.
I mean, I.
That's okay. Change in zoning, you're right, yeah.
Um, careful enforcement and management of the zoning code.
It's just, uh, you did de-capitalize, so. Yeah.
Around parking is crucial, especially as we deal with overwhelming amount of tourists now and in the future. We are still left with a basic capacity, a basic capacity issue of a lack of parking spaces, especially during peak times. Um, with regards to one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main Street, the following comments concern the applicant's desire to provide, quote. Less off-street parking than specified in village law, requiring a variance from provisions of one thirty-four dash seventeen dot M. This is uh taken from the public hearing notice, by the way. Um, first, we ask that any uh variance issued be uh, first, we ask that any variance. Issued should be with respect to a specific uses parking requirement. In this case, retail use and residential use. The code, in the code, one thirty-four dash seventeen dot M, we see our view on parking is meant to be tempered by an understanding that off-street parking regulation alone. Cannot address all parking and transportation challenges, and the code's intent is to meet residential. Resident requirements and support commerce while discouraging excessive use of vehicles.
I I I think we either wanna put a period after the transportation parking challenges and then see maybe the code is inherent. I think that that might be a little bit much, starting from in the code, going all the way down there without any punctuation. Right, there you go.
Code's intent, or actually, I love furthermore.
The, okay.
Moreover.
Moreover is off.
No, 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 no.
Yeah. Furthermore, the code's intent is to meet residential requirements and support commerce while discouraging excessive use of vehicles. Given that framing, we strongly discourage the reduction in parking.
I think you need a contract.
We strongly discourage the reduction in parking requirements for residential use. Doing so would put an unnecessary burden on the residents of Cold Spring, especially the eventual residents. Of the residential units at one thirty-three, one thirty-five Main. With respect to retail use, while we believe granting of the variance could be directionally supported. By the code's intent of discouraging. of discouraging excessive use of vehicles, the board feels that every effort should be made by the applicant to meet the required parking spaces as specified in the code. We also note that this relief could be achieved and in fact has often been achieved by requesting a parking waiver from the village board via the planning board. Would anyone like to make a motion to allow the chair to sign and send the letter to zoning board?
Um, I, I would like to make a motion uh to, to the chair to sign and send this letter to the zoning board.
Great.
That is a motion.
All right, adopted. Uh, thank you.
Bye, sir Nate.
Bye, bye, bye. Yeah, okay. Support it. Okay, good job, everyone.
Yeah.
Oh, well, this is.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
It's, it, it's what we had to do because we can't pass emails around, so it's going to be this process.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna export this.
Jonathan, is there, is there any way in which we can uh perform something with this virtually?
Sorry, I missed that last part.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, you know, um, you know, in, in, in many other circumstances, we'd be able to, like, share a document around in, in track changes or something and we'd just be able to make edits and, and arrive, arrive at a, at a, a single document with people's comments, even if there were disagreements, they could, they could actually comment in their disagreements. I mean, is that, that's not, that's not legal? That's not kosher?
So, uh, do you mean board members' comments or comments uh from the public?
Board members' comments. So, so, so let's, let's say, for example, um, you know, uh, you know, John, uh, let's say, um, Jesse started, started writing this and then I, I added in and then Kevin added in and, you know, we all added into this and made, we're making changes off of a, um, off of, of a virtual document. That's that's not permitted, right?
Yeah, I mean, I would say it, it's okay to, to do it that way while you're drafting it, but um, I, I think the final document should be what, what you guys agree on.
Well, no, they, last, last meeting, we were gonna see about having a, a document that was written by Ben and then sent to the rest or just shared with the rest of the board that could edit and make comments, but we were told that that is not possible because all of these have to be done in a sort of public setting. Um, I think that's what.
That's, that's, that's why, what I understood as well.
I see, yeah, yeah. So really, any um deliberations uh do have to be done in a meeting? So I think that's, if, if that's what John said, that's probably what he was getting at there. Um, but, you know, you guys could certainly draft stuff on your own.
Okay, right, but we can't discuss any edits uh outside of the board meeting itself.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh. Oh, okay.
Uh, okay, so I've, uh, I've got no more business. I do have a, um, a question for Jonathan that I would just like, uh, we can do a, um, a council session immediately after we adjourn the meeting. Is that allowed?
Um, you, you're looking to do an executive session?
I'm sorry, uh, uh, in council session, or what, like, where?
Attorney client.
What was that?
An attorney-client session.
Yeah, attorney-client session, sorry.
So Jonathan.
So, um.
They have to vote to go into that and then we have to.
Yeah.
Computer, yes.
Yep, and so, um, you can, you, you should do it while the meeting is uh still going on, but if you want to, you know, finish all of everything you have to talk about prior to doing that, that's fine, but technically it should be while the meeting is still going.
Okay, so, um, I'd like to make a motion to go into a attorney-client meeting with our, with village attorney?
I'll second that motion.
And, and, okay, yeah, I agree with that, too. I, I, but do we have to adjourn the meeting now?
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll come back and then we'll adjourn the meeting, so we'll, we'll pause.
So now we're going to pause the meeting.
Yep.
Now, one, um, one other scenario that I could see.
Jonathan, we, we exited the, the, we're recording again, just FYI.
Oh, okay.
Um, let, let, let me get, let me get us back on track and then, um, if you have anything you feel is appropriate to share, you can. Um, so, all right, so, um, uh, I'd like the motion to exit, uh, the session to seek advice of counsel. Can I get a second? Great, um. I, I also say for the record that, uh, no actions or decisions uh were taken by the board during our, our council, council session, so.
Just need a vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi.
Right. Okay, um. I think that is the end. John, is there anything you, you would like to, to say before we go?
Nope, that's all I have. Great.
Great. Um, yeah.
I'm going to motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Great.
All right.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, take care.
Take care.